Into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What was that?
We didn't hear that.
I didn't see a sign on the door.
There's a sign on the door, just to make it easier to know what to do, to have public comment.
Oh, okay.
Are, is there any public comments, since we didn't, didn't everybody saw that?
Yes, there is.
Yes.
Is what, an item we be talking about?
Um, well, since, I was gonna speak on policy, but since it wasn't put on there, I'll talk about transparency.
Would it have to be an agenda item to talk about?
It is, it is.
It is.
Transparency is an agenda item.
Transparency, okay.
It's in.
Were you gonna talk at that time?
Yeah. But, I'll go ahead and talk here.
Well, there's different public comments and comments on the agenda.
Right.
Okay, alright.
Alright.
I'll wait then.
Alright, go for it, please do. Please do.
Good evening, I stand for you tonight, not just as a concerned parent, community member, but as a voice for the children who cannot advocate for themselves, and for the parents who trust that when they send their kids to school, they're sending them to a place that puts safety above all else. That trust has been shaken. I am deeply troubled by the transparency of a policy, policy KK, and the decision that feels less like oversight and more like betrayal. The betrayal of our children's safety are communities values and the basic standards we expect from those in positions of authority. Why is there a policy in place that allows a registered sex offender to be present on campus simply because they are escorted and approved by the principal? And more importantly, why is this acceptable when the very principal who can grant that permission is married to a registered sex offender? Let's call this what it is, a glaring conflict of interest so severe that our children are at risk. This isn't new information. This man's history was known, his offenses were known, and the relationship between him and the now principal was known long before her promotion from vice principal. So I ask you, why was she elevated to a role of greater authority, especially over-
Can you stop me right there? So we can't talk about personnel issues in open session?
Okay, but this is public knowledge.
Either way, we can talk about it, but we would need to make the time to talk about it in closed session.
But I'm still willing to finish my speech, so sir.
Thanks, don't talk about the personnel.
I'm not saying no. I didn't say anybody's no. More importantly, why is this acceptable when the very principal who granted that permission is married to a registered sex offender? Let's call this what it is, a glaring conflict of interest so severe that puts our children at risk. This isn't new information, this man's history was known, his offenses were known, and the relationship between him and the now principal was known long before her promotion from vice principal. So I ask you, why was she elevated to a role of greater authority, especially over the very age group her husband was convicted of targeting? And here's another question. Why were photos of this man at school functions deleted from social media once questioned so did you ask? Does that not seem suspicious? Does that not suggest there was an awareness that what was happening wasn't right? Those pictures were taken before the conviction, then why remove them at all? Unless there was something else to harm. Actions like these only even mistrust parents are already feeling. What message does this send to our students, parents, to survivors? It tells them that silence is safer than speaking out. That policies matter more than people, that personal connections can trump conscience, and that somehow in this system, the predator can still find access, as long as the paperwork is in order. Before anyone tells me that as a Christian, I should forgive and forget, let me remind you, forgiveness does not mean enabling. It does not mean turning a blind eye. My Savior came in flipping tables and standing up while I was writing, and I will do the same if I must, and I will stand alone if I have to, to protect our children. Because the Bible is crystal clear on what should happen to anyone who causes a child to stumble. It would be better for them to have the millstone tied around their neck and thrown into the sea. We are not asking for vengeance. We are asking for wisdom, for discernment, for leadership that puts children first, not politics, not personal relationships, not loopholes in policy. So I ask you plainly, why does a policy like this exist in the first place? Why was someone married to a known sex offender placed in a higher position of direct influence over children? Why were photos of this individual on campus created from public view? How can we trust someone who is married to a sex offender, takes pictures of our children at school events, and uses their social media pages? And now that the public is aware, what are you prepared to do about it? How can we trust a principal who chooses not to communicate with parents about issues involving their children? Instead, she pulls children aside privately to discuss matters that should only be addressed with a parent present. That is not leadership, that is intimidation, that is bullying. And when parents try to-
Wrap it up, we're getting in all the time.
Well, I will wrap it up, but I want to finish first. And when parents try to discuss these concerns, she hangs up on the mid-conversation. And that's happened to me twice. She doesn't coordinate with the front office or keep them informed about important matters, and experiences first cannot be done. She cannot handle the responsibilities and pressures that come with being a principal, and I ask again, why is she in this position? We deserve answers, our children deserve protection, and it's this board's responsibility to prioritize their safety. To hope they're not used human beings above policy friendships and politics.
You as our leaders, your kind.
Well, I'm gonna finish, I have a little bit.
Sorry, are you going to see the rules by talking about-
I don't care, I'm gonna finish on the second.
No, you're not, you just stop now.
You as our leaders have more obligation than-
Or you can leave, or you can leave.
Not after another meeting.
You will follow the rules, or you will pay for it.
Because every day this policy stands is another day we fail, the very ones who rely on us most, our children. And I will not sit down for you, sir. I will finish when I'm done. Thank you.
We need you to leave first, sir. Alright. Okay, we have time for one more, if there's any more public comment.
Oh, there's a bunch. There's a bunch.
We can do three.
Oh, okay.
Five minutes, these are not our rules, it doesn't belong.
Well, I want to speak. Transparency, Cody Kimbrough. I want to speak on community and parent involvement. Good evening, members of the board, I'm here tonight to speak on the importance of community and parent involvement in our schools. Recently, our school's field day has been moved to, from the Birchtree Elementary grounds to Mountain View football field. Historically, parents have always been welcome to attend field day at Birchtree, however, this year, with the event held at Mountain View, parents were not allowed to participate. If relocating field day to Mountain View means excluding parents from being involved, then I strongly urge the administration to reconsider holding it there in the future. Parents' involvement is a crucial part of our children's educational experience, not just academically, but socially and emotionally as well. I understand the administration has cited safety concerns as a reason for limiting parent participation, however, to my knowledge, there has never been an opportunity for parents to complete background checks, to address these safety concerns. If funding is an issue, I believe many parents would be willing to contribute, either through a fundraiser or by paying for their own background checks. I individually would, I, I would. Anything to help out with the kids. We as parents want to help our children's school experiences, whether it's attending classroom parties, joining them for lunch on Parents' Day, or Grandparents' Day, or simply being present for special events. What are we asking for the collaboration solution? Not a blanket denial, like we have been, like we go to the front office and we're shut down, we can't go past it, who knows what's going on? Unfortunately, many of us feel we have not received clear answers or seen proactive steps towards increasing parent involvement, instead, we constantly are told it's a safety concern, without further discussion. I respectfully ask this board and the administration to take a more active role in addressing these concerns. Let's work together, find reasonable, safe solutions, and don't exclude parents, but instead foster a stronger school community. Thank you for your time, consideration. Give the rest of my time to someone else.
My name, Janita, Janita Mooney.
In which area are you gonna talk about?
I am talking about the transparency of the policy of makeup hours. But I don't know if I'm M, N, or O. So, I'm a bit- Okay, that's what I'm, I'm-
You're actually on the agenda.
You're on the agenda, so we have to get in.
Bobby was on the agenda as well, right? He was-
She's not on the agenda. She wants to speak about one of the items that's on the agenda.
You're talking about, item O.
Okay, so do you want me to wait? And give somebody else the chance to talk?
Yes.
For O, so were you wanting to talk? See, sunshine law says that we have to have a public comment to be talked about, specific agenda items that we have already listed, because the public has the right to be here, you can see that. If it's not, if what you're wanting to talk about is not specifically on today's agenda, we can help get it on the agenda for the next week. That way, we have time to post it, so that we can stay within the law.
Right, I just wanted to make sure, if I'm already on-
But you're not.
You're not.
You're not.
Okay. Okay. I said, I'm here tonight to address the transparency of policy that was forced onto our children without any input from the very people it affects most, the parents and the children. I'm talking about the makeup hours part of the attendance policy for middle schoolers. A decision made behind closed doors, without discussion, without transparency, without regarding for the well-being of our students. First, let's call it what it is, it's a punishment disguised as a policy. You're using makeup hours not to support our students, but to retaliate against them, and it is wrong. Let me give you an example. My granddaughter had a valid doctor's note for every absentee last semester, every single one. But because that note didn't list specific dates, and instead followed a doctor's standard wording, who tells her free, she was still flapped with makeup hours. She was punished for being sick, punished for following medical advice, when it was implemented into this policy that you will no longer, or you will longer, no longer accept doctor's note, that it is except on your terms and stipulations. I can assure you as parents, we are not consulted or included in that decision. Does that, does that sound like a system designed to help kids? Or does it sound like a system designed to control them? You're taking away every joy that school is supposed to bring. No dances, no field trips, no extracurriculars, all because of a few missed days. You're stripping students of the very thing that motivated them to show up and belong. And for what? This isn't high school, where credit hours are required for graduation, although the credit, the word credit shows up in your attendant policy for the middle school quite frequently. They are not, they do not have credits, this policy is just unnecessary and cruel. Let's say it's justified, you claim it's about accountability, let, let me tell you what it's actually doing. It's sending kids to the emergency room over, with panic attacks, over missed dances and missed field trips. It's causing parents to pull their children out of school and into homeschool. It's turning school into a place of punishment, not learning. And you cannot pretend you don't know what's happening. Two weeks of summer school for 10 hours makeup hours, that's absurd, it's punitive, it's excessive, and it's damaging. We are parents, we are not consulted, we are not included, and we will not stay silent while you punish our children and our grandchildren under the guise of policy. Let's call this as it is, you want a way to punish the parents and the children for excessive absences. Some children are just sick. They get sick easy, I have a son that's in school, I have grandkids that are in school, they get sick easy. Let me just read something from your current attendant policy. The educational loss resulting from absences from class, which cannot be adequately measured or cannot be entirely regained through makeup hours is irrational for the attendant policy. I would argue that it can be measured, let me just present to the board Ashlyn's report card, which-
Could you, if you're close, we will lower the volume.
I just want to see your child's safety. But because of policies that have, you would have been, if you had to pay up for hours, and she did. But even though, she missed it. The policies you have need to be more individualized, or the hours you need, you have for them, missing students, or missing hours, need to be more individualized than just for everyone.
Thank you very much. Okay. So, we need to get an approval of the special motion. Hold up a table. We're gonna add item P, which is the four dollars. I'll make the motion, do you see the direction?
But I have fellow principals who have come to me and said, you know, if my board doesn't support it, then I can't put in policy. And there are some boards who don't believe in the whole no-bone business. Um, but anybody who doesn't support it's really impacting the students. Um, so that, we'll see where that goes. Of course, I must be a generator of policies. There is a motion that, um, the federal and the government is going to shift that fifty million dollars into the student education account. There's a constitutionally not on the up and out, you know, it's still very good. Um, but he's taking tax dollars and placing them in his public in private education for that. Um, which the constitution says is not possible. So, we'll see where that goes. The school, the state school board has been realigned to very much support, um, the school choice and pro, um, party school movement. So, it will be here in a few weeks to see how the state board moves forward in terms of policy. You know, we just have to keep our finger on the pulse because it's all about funding schools, getting one, um, maybe ninety thousand students in public education and, you know, all the time. So, as far as I know, um, not too much in that capacity. So, we got a delegate assembly, then national, um, safety, uh, conference is in St. Louis for twenty fifth through twenty seventh. That's put on like plasma, which is on National School Board Association, basically. Um, I don't know if you've been attending that, but that's a great opportunity to learn about public school safety. Great speakers, great opportunity there. Um, so that's really.
Looks like we have middle school business, so there's not any business. Item A, item B.
Could you join the doctor, Walter? My name is Tammy Heine. I am the Liberty Middle School principal and I am honored because all three districts recipients come from my building. Yeah, every one of them. I'm gonna start. Kelly, could you come up here and stand, please? If Liberty Middle School were a machine, this person would be the engine, the steering wheel and the cup holder. She's what she does it all and somehow manages to do it with a smile. She's the front office superhero at LMS and the behind her is Dean MDP at LHS as the athletic secretary. She's the events wizard, the lunch line legend, the paperwork pro and finder of all lost things. Always answering questions before you finish asking them. Trust me, I go, Kelly, and she answers. And sending out emails at night. How many did you receive the email at night? Yeah. And, uh, to make sure every athletic committee is covered, been turning around and doing it all to give them a step. People say she likes superwoman and we agree, but honestly, even superwoman, organized, kind, fix a laugh and all the grit and the lint at hand. Our schools run smoother, smile brighter and chaos is calm because she's winning. Please, Kelly.
Congratulations.
Uh, I'm gonna get a picture of all of you together. Some accent or no accent? It's an honor to introduce this year's Mountain View Burke Street Rookie Teacher of the Year. As a middle school student on student council. Back when I was a sponsor, she showed natural leadership, enthusiasm, strong work ethic. In her first year of teaching, oh, she has created a classroom full of energy, creativity and curiosity. Yesterday, she worked fantastic. From music videos that bring history to life to three D PowerPoint for students with three D glasses. To a March Madness style math quiz competition. Her lessons are anything but a one. Students are excited to enter her room because they know the challenges her age and value. She builds strong relationships. I don't know what to do. She's amazing, guys. She's amazing. I have the most fun. She manages her classroom with the confidence of a veteran. I tell her all the time. She got with it. I walk in and it's just like, what is going on here? And constantly seeks new ways to grow. Her passion for teaching is clear in everything she does. Here she is. I don't know if she's ever forgiven. Kinsey, you can probably be quiet, but I also think I'm the only person that would do it for all. Okay, now this one, I gotta get it, get it together, get it together. It is my absolute honor to introduce the Mountain View Burke Street Teacher of the Year. I actually had the joy of teaching her, or maybe it was her twin, I don't know, in third grade. They kind of switched one day with Wendy Golden and I in third grade. Um, they don't look anything alike. No, they do, you can tell. And now I have even greater joy from watching her show. Across all four buildings, her name brings instant smiles and admiration. She's been called the Math leader whisperer, a mentor, a leader and a blessing to our district. Her classroom is a vibrant structured space where students feel safe, challenged and engaged. She makes math beautiful, fun and accessible for all learners. Running pieces. With great patience and in honey waves or commitment to student growth, she inspires enough students for their quality. She inspires them. She works tirelessly, peacefully but powerfully and gives her heart for everything she does. Tonight, we are proud to recognize someone who truly embodies excellence and education. Our teacher, Mrs. Julie. LMS?
Okay, so now we're going to move to.
Okay, the manual, this is the fourth package, and, um, Mrs. Allen is here. Um, she, we could present that. It's, it's over here. Well, hold on. Mrs. Allen is an exceptional, um, assistant teacher. Okay, we're sending seven names here. So, my favorite, um, and your second team's got a team. We're in the process right now, it's a big number, we kind of tried something different this year. We use I read scores and math tests to kind of do universal training at most schools and even state for the minutes. But instead of more money and more time, we decided to do what we already have. And so far, it's looking very, um, I feel like very beneficial. Um, this year, our big theme was natural parks. The kids absolutely loved it. They planned a gold trip. Brian is going to Yellowstone at a guarantee time. Mike's going to North Pass. So, anyway, I'm going with you guys. So, I mean, it all came out, they made a whole bunch of, they, this is why I said they were gonna stay. They had a stop for play. It was so much fun and the kids absolutely loved it. And then we get a little Australian theme, but they made a little rough too. Really, they committed that, but I think the kids quite loved it and there's a team of questions. I have a pair for later.
You say how many? About two meters long.
Uh, it's twenty, I think it's been twenty-four.
Is there a gap? Is it a percentage of our students?
It's supposed to be a percentage.
It's not like a minimum.
Definitely not. We have a lot of it this Monday, um, after the middle school, high school, dad, we're working on it.
So, we're still doing gifted in the middle school?
Um, no, we do not have a gifted in the middle school, but we do have an ADA club. I don't know what ADA is, so they make that happen and now they don't. I know, but, uh, we do, um, things on our trip and escape and field trips and things. So, not actually, that's what we do, we try to make.
This was a very simple, um, one thing, I can't, I can't make it happen. So, but we tried. So, I mean, it's very about having certain stuff and I think because they're loving it from all of the comments I hear. Because you know, when I go to their first seat, we all totally flock to them and we do this and we have to do this and they're absolutely loving it. I invite them to Mondays and it's hard to make basketball, but I usually there all day and I'm like, oh, it's good. We have a basketball and we have a, we have a, we have a.
Oh, you go ahead.
Yes, it's fine up here.
They actually like rush in and they have a little elephant and a rat and, um, a couple of horses and.
And I'm gonna recommend that we approve the gifted and talented program. I know that was in your package for twenty five twenty six.
And I will update the rest of it.
Oh, you can listen to me again. Does this work more?
I don't know. I don't know. I don't even. Sometimes it does and sometimes it doesn't.
Uh, the purpose of this presentation is to share student growth, celebrate progress and inform future decisions. So, I knew that there were gonna be a few extra people here today, so I wanted to make sure that we knew that what the I read the I adopted was. It is our adaptive assessment and reading method. So, it adapts to how the student is doing at that time. So, they're gonna, you know, watch your harder, kind of find that balance, right? And so, once it gets it, that's the score that we get. We administer this three times a year at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year and measure student performance, but it also measures their growth. And I really like to focus on growth. Being on grade level is the goal, but growth is just as important. Students start the year at different levels. We know that. They come in, some students may be, um, playing math games all summer long and they don't lose a bit. Some have even picked up a book, they're working in, it's a limit at a different level. And so, some need more than just a year to catch up. I read tracks their goals, their typical, that's their typical growth, that's what they should grow in a year and their stretch growth. And that's what, um, they should grow over a three-year period. That's to close the gaps, okay, if there are gaps. When students need growth goals, it shows they're making strong progress even if they're not on grade level. And focusing on growth helps us support every student, every step of the way. Would you guys agree? Growth, I think it really is important. Okay, so now let's get reading. This is our overall performance on reading. I can't see, it's a little fuzzy. So, at the bottom, you're gonna see our first diagnostic, um, and let's see. Green with a line is mid or above grade level, green is early grade level, yellow is one year below. And, uh, red is two years below and, uh, red with a line are three or more years below, okay? And so, we start in the year with eighty-one students at or above and then one hundred forty stu- two early on. And so, you can see, and our goal is to make these smaller and these larger. And you can see that overall, that's exactly what we did. We did, um, move all of those in the direction that we want, okay? We do have, um, our each independent pool. And I'm just gonna let you look at those. The bottom is the first diagnostic, here's the percentages and then the top is the current. And we're gonna break that down by grade level in just a second so that you can see that. Are there any questions about these? They did, all have growth. They did, um, we're moving it. That's the way that we're going to. Here is Mountain View Elementary. This is kindergarten. You know, I really like to see all the kindergarten read on green because that means, because they really, to be a year below in kindergarten, I mean, that you're very, uh, really, it is. You probably don't know your letters, things, any awareness. And so, having all green, that's really our goal. That gives them that foundation. And so, this little percentage here, three percent, you know, that's gonna be a focus of title one. I know, but that'll be that. Same with grade one, having ready grade one, this, this is really gonna be, um, a focus. Then here's grade two, that's not the elementary, but we are growing. That's our, we're growing. That's why tutoring, RTI, all of that is so important, you know, after school tutoring especially, um, that title, title one services. This is third grade. Fourth grade, fifth grade. I'll let you look at that for just a second. I can read all that to you, it's like all that, you can just color coded makes it much better. Do you like those? Anything on this? Then we're gonna go to, uh, Burke Street. This is the kindergarten first and second. And then, you know, this will be, I think this will really be a main focus for the kids in, you know, the next grade at the beginning of the year. Getting those without foundation. What this gives us, this data gives us, we've got plans for next year already. Um, and then these are, you know, three, third, fourth. Any questions? And this is one of the middle school. And I'm gonna tell you, we own this, um, when they get to eighth grade and there are, some of our students are still scoring on third grade level because they always sit in behind and just, it's so, it's hard to close that. But you're gonna learn what we're doing about it in just a minute. So, let's talk about growth. This is important. This is the part that I really love. This right here is our typical growth average. So, for all the kids at Burke Street in grade one, their average, that median score, well, it's because Brian was, was a hundred and six percent. Fifty-nine percent of them actually met that hundred percent growth, okay? Seventy-five percent of these, you know, did, uh, first grade, fifty-two percent, fifty-eight, fifty-four. You can see, but that median student, they all met the typical growth. That, that's good. That was really good. Their stretch growth, and remember, this is the growth that's gonna close those gaps. We would love for that to be a hundred percent. Um, that's hard. It is hard when, uh, but you see that, you know, they're working toward it and this is the percentage of students that actually, um, did that. So, overall, that data looks very good. And that view elementary, um, each median score was a hundred percent or above, fourth grade was a little bit below. Uh, this is just, and I've already discussed that. And then, um, here's the stretch growth and that's to close that gap. And this is a really. Okay, so, future decision for reading. Um, at NVE MBT, although the average growth is almost all classes at a hundred percent, we have some kindergarten, first grade students already a year behind. This is going to be a title one focus and this is just, has already decided and strengthen their chronological awareness, their phonics and high frequency words without. That's, you know, that's what title one's gonna be focused on. At both elementary schools, we're seeing a lower growth percentage or grade level in second, uh, grade one and second grade, um, especially in the phonics area. Because it breaks it down, we have the five areas and the fifth year, and second grade in phonics. So, here we're wanting to focus on phonics in this grade level. That would be both elements. It was a low, it was high in kindergarten, high in first grade and then it went down in, in second. So, that's gonna be key. And with extra title one support, we still have our students, we're gonna have an extra support. So, that's the plan. Her, it's a little bit more specific than, uh, than what she has in mind, but we want to. Now, at LMS, there will be an entry for literacy in all content areas. This is written into the, our building and group of plans and it will be a focus of teacher evaluation. We are all literacy teachers, aren't we? Kinsey? Yes, we are all, Mrs. Williams. They know. They're all literacy teachers. The intervention plan has been updated to add time for ELA and math teachers to go through individual minutes during the day to get tier one, two and three and not to go back home next year, we are starting that plan, uh, to make it up. And Monday tutoring is going to be adjusted. Instead of having tutoring, whatever, kids just come in or actually go to do math at a certain time and have a math teacher and you read it at a certain time, instead of just, you know, kids blowing in and then literacy prep and we talk about that. Any questions about readers? Here is our math data for our school report. Again, we want this all to go down. It did. This can get larger if it wants because we're moving those over, but we really like it for the green. And this is, this definitely knew it's been. This is each building, um, Burke Street, Liberty and Mountain View. All of them are moving right along. Mountain View Elementary, for our kindergarten first and second grade. Again, this is gonna be a focus. Those kids, much like this, we gotta build that foundation. It's gonna be numbers since, really, I think that's what they're gonna have to hit. Grade three, four and five. Not sure this, just so you can really look at it. BTE. Third, fourth and fifth, I'm sorry, I'm not standing. I don't wanna be in the group. LMS. You know, last year with the math scores, um, each of the elementary was big strong in reading and LMS struggled in reading, but our math scores were, um, amazing. And again, they really are and we still are struggling in that reading area and the, the elementary are a little bit lower than the math area. So, growth wise, this is BTE growth. We see a couple better at sixty-six percent, but that, that, that typical growth wasn't a hundred percent. So, that's an area we're gonna have to really focus on. And, um, but I think we have a plan, uh, because it's like a, Mountain View, again, um, the typical growth there. Is lower than what we want, just like we had on our math scores because then at Liberty, at the middle school, math, uh, typical growth is exponentially larger than a hundred percent. And in fact, we all have saved all of our stretch growth too. And, um, I mean, two hundred eight, that's that middle kid. Uh, that's our math. So, this is what we're going to do. At NVE MBTE staff will use the supplemental interventions provided in the curriculum to make it easy for students. These are built in pre-recorded reports to support students who are not master necessarily, who have to fit for the master, the next standard. Uh, we're gonna keep doing this, doing data dives, looking at that information, uh, all of that data and we're gonna teach that earned feeling of fidelity. And then LMS, our math teacher remains committed to delivering the full curriculum by expectations and where your meaningful tasks. While the level of channels may not always be easy, right? And the times they go to manage for students in here, it really is. Um, the approach is intentional and effective. You can see it in our school. It's effective. Um, the school is seeing clear evidence that this consistency, like this related to strong student growth, student growth. So, um, overall, that's where we're at. Questions?
Do you see like one of us, you know, picturing is, you know, put on the app and I'll split it on there. Does that change the next year, have you done it long enough? Does it seem like it stays the same as it could be?
Yeah, the class will stay pretty, you know, consistent. We do see growth though. We do see growth, like, um, not what this, in both buildings, this second grade group, they have lower scores. So, we're gonna really have to focus on this second grade group to give them that extra support. Do you agree? Do you agree? Yeah. And so, um, what our goal is to close that, yeah, usually, I mean, it's, it's difficult to close a gap. And that's why that extra time and that, teaching that curriculum and the fidelity.
I mean, second grade, you know, my son just had a second, you know, he's only three years old. And two of them, I think it was sub type for year.
And that's gonna have a, absolutely.
I just don't want the teachers overwhelmed, you know, I have a daughter who's on high school. And so, if you had a poor teacher, you get more hands on with the students, we cut back the three. They're overwhelmed and they don't have time to spend.
We all agree with that. That's, and there are not this carbon in another discussion, but you can't really do that. But, like, that is the battle we're facing on multiple levels, uh, both financially as well as availability of actually having teachers get applied for position. So, it's inevitable that it's often going to get worse, but I can promise you, heavy on the air.
So, is there, is there an outreach for, like, possibly volunteers coming in to help with this?
We have a volunteer program, but she's asking, is there a, a method to help? We have a volunteer program, but she's asking, is there a, a method to help? Always for you, right, currently, we don't have an active program, but we definitely have volunteers for different things, and it's something we can discuss and bring up to try to get more clear in the future, then.
There are a lot of older people, um, do, like, the, the rest children and stuff, you can take it up to second graders, you know?
Okay, and I just wanted to make a comment too, like, having been able to see this over the years and progress that has been made, and then, kind of, teacher guys are just born about being ranked fifty-second in the state by some of all the schools. How I'm nation thinks, a part of that is the math scores that our students did at the top of the list in the state were very.
And you were, pretty, high, pretty.
Yeah, so, I think that's absolutely amazing, and this is a great part of what the guys are doing, with the tools we have, kind of, like that out. Yeah.
Is there a residual effect of COVID? Because I remember my two older kids, five years ago, were in third and fourth grade, and I noticed the eighth grade's struggling in math.
I think schools have always been a little bit more, um, well, no, just the, um, eighth grade scores overall, especially at the beginning. Um, they have, I do have eighth gradeitis, and it's difficult, they are burned out, absolutely. But, no, this, this group has, math score-wise, they were a little bit lower than, than the, this, this sixth grade, really, if you watch, um, but, can't say that because of, you know, COVID.
I didn't, if you even talk about celebrations.
Uh-huh, yeah. So that would have third grade, uh, it was a third, third grade in COVID, yeah. It had problems?
It was definitely a little more, yeah, influence, you know, I see it laterally in our world, um, but we were closely in for most of those days, you know, we were really blessed to be able to keep teaching. I see it in other districts where they were really work seated, and they were like, oh, cool, or they just.
Well, I don't know, it's a little bit weird.
Right.
My granddaughter did a cellus that year, and she makes grade A this year, and A grade.
So, we, um, uh, we talked about, uh, did you go to that conference, Acceleration for All, it's acceleration for all, dominant, yeah, all four of them, um, where, you know, we don't look back, basically, like, there's, what we do is embed in the current culture. We stayed focused back there, we never moved forward, so we embed in the current, the current culture, we try to weave everything in, you know, um, pre-rolled things.
All right, now to YMG, the cocaine side of the town. So these, uh, we had a notice placed for bits by municipal papers, uh, mail notices to local companies, we had, it's still fits here. Uh, last year it was, um, barrel gas, and, uh, a dollar sixteen per gallon for the transport, and a dollar three eight five for the market. So just gonna hold them out. And for the, okay, so they're gonna offer twenty-four hours, seven days a week, emergency service, they have nationwide supply points, safety chain, propane services, and taking, taking instructions. One point one eight five for gallon for transport, one point four three nine for gallon for bottle. One point one eight five for gallons of transport, one point four three nine for gallon for bottle. This is Mount View, uh, probably coming. Kind of reading what they have on here. So transport delivery is one point three nine nine. And for the bottle sale, one point four five nine. They don't, they don't have anything else except for their, that was down there. This one, the transport propane. Then it's the, uh, school district's fifth form, uh, we have for the transport, one point two seven nine. And for the bottle sale, one point four four nine. We have one more bit. This one's been that big oil. So they have a little bit different format here, they have, uh, just, uh, one price, one point four nine per gallon, and if they do an annual test and they can't, and they, um, there will be no additional charge. They didn't actually break that down into, um, so that one doesn't. Okay, would a bottle have, if it was given, it's not broken down by bottle sellers?
Yeah, I know, that's true.
They're, they're going, well, it's, they're on two, or?
Barrel has to be very well, I don't understand, uh, the difference between, uh, propane and residential, home purchase propane, and the laws, the different, more, more, uh, yeah, it's covered, but it's good, that's good, and it's, you know, the same, everybody involved, but, yeah, they've got, they've got somebody on call, like, there's, uh, they, and they're in, they're in a, so they, they know where, how to go on, for schools, and, of schools, so, uh, they, uh, this is, uh, this is, uh, So just do a, 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 yeah, but they have, they have those break out, and have trucks, and I have one of them, obviously, break out, just so they really have a lot of information.
So barrel's still below, if you, um, try, so we have, okay, it's one point four nine nine. Transport propane, one point three six four. Mountain oil, one point four two nine, and then, barrels, one point three nine.
And that's a little bit of a different thing? All of them? Okay, so, I am H, is your related service contact?
Several of our, uh, special ed students require re-resources, occupational therapy, physical therapy, mental therapy, and therapy and nursing. Uh, we place notices for business and local papers, and share notices for local providers. Ms. Mina and I have reviewed the bids, those bids and contracts, um, are available, and I have those, and if you would like to provide to see them. The contracts that we would like to create, we would like to continue, uh, a contract with those arts, um, healthcare, for physical therapy, Beth Trotter, uh, has, uh, registered occupational therapist, occupational therapies. And then, Bayada is a nursing company for private, private nursing, and that covers speech to men. And then, the speech therapy, um, it's called Therapy Log, um, the National Association, uh, which provides in the first school, speech therapy, and then, another nursing company, Advantage Nursing Services, which would provide substitute private nursing services.
We got one, anyone do, do you see? Is it? Any other questions? If you're gonna break it down, and shoot one, or, 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 so. If there is no other questions, I would entertain a debate to accept those arts, for example, for the physical therapy contract. All those, right? And that's probably, will be registered occupational therapist. So, need a motion? Need a second? All of them, right? All those in there? And then, the last one is the damaged nursing services. Need a motion? One second, is it? All of them, finish? All of them, show it, question? Okay, so, I O I, the transportation manual provision, twenty-five, twenty-sixty, twenty-one, twenty-two.
So, uh, that is all included in the packet, um, basically, just want to update it, um, all the, all the policies are linked from there. You know, one thing that's not in the transportation manual are the maps, for the routes, uh, because they change weekly, and they'll get to move in, or to move out, you know, whatever the case may be, so, I keep those, uh, cows, if anybody would like to look at a map, or drawings, uh, highlighters and stuff, uh, but, driving through a great job, and early down, maybe, if you were to stop every morning, never even, you know, assuming that there are no crews across the road, and roads washed out, and things of that nature, uh, but, uh, glad to answer any questions, conversation, or, or, as, which is updated, to show all of it. All right, permission? Has a full, uh, which is currently, which is, two years in a row, a hundred percent on, uh, you know, we are, we're, we're within one, we're, our goal is that everything's ten years old, or, or, that, we've only got one that is outside of that criteria, um, but, uh, the number of things, it's, so, paying is very, uh, difficult, we have to adjust something, but, uh, this is not, in a, in a good position, but we can get stagnant, but we will be back in that position, because our transportation goes, like I tell, if a bus drops, and not, uh, that's, we must go, so, we gotta, we gotta, we need to go after, uh, so, we're, 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 they actually, uh, I'm taking one up next week, I'm utilizing that, that week with Canadian School, summer school, and before crazy June sports trips, camps, et cetera, et cetera, start, so, whenever the June chaos starts, we will have two buses equipped for the edition, and, with the way to get that out, and during the month of June, we'll be able to hold that chaos happy, and, uh, et cetera. We're in the liberty, we're, we're, it's a, it's a week long, so, we, playing, so, everything, so, hi, by July one, we'll have two buses, so, or, or, yeah, we say, so, uh, we just need to do a second question. Need a motion? Sort of like bus from, right, get you on the road, I just need some more time, you know? We should be happy, and we're going to, we're going to.
Like everything else, you gotta do a background test, I got that there. I already got my fingerprint, but I ain't doing that again.
So, and, and we have, uh, I'm not sure if both are one, or, 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 okay, Jay, do they hand those presentation?
Those, those, those have more, um, they, uh, pay their handbooks, which are in their packets, uh, those do not need to be boarders, but they do, so, if you have those, ask them any questions for the administer, um, in the meantime, they, uh, revise those handbooks, uh, you will be made aware of that, that they're aligned with our policy.
And now, the literacy plan.
We are required to have a literacy plan, all districts are, and, um, our building technical, Ms. Jester, uh, had worked on the literacy plan, and, had it in great shape, and you'd have to be happy if you, if you want any questions about that, for you. It's most exciting, you know, to get to, uh, Mrs. Heine, I'm not gonna steal a thunder, but she needs to talk to you about a literacy plan.
You know, we bring it up in that, the, our, our ELLA, reading scores, and, and, we go to the, this year, on literacy, uh, and, 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 I sat down and wrote a grant for the confidence of literacy state development, if that's what the grant feels, who received it, um, it's twenty thousand dollars a year, for four years, and I gave you this little paper here, we meet with a, uh, we'll have a, a partner, who's actually going to meet with us, and what we'll do is make a needs assessment, and we're going to focus on what is the one thing that we've been at once now, um, and then, we'll build that whole literacy plan for the next, uh, year, over that one thing, measure growth, um, we're super excited about it, we're gonna get to do book studies, there's gonna be professional development, we get purchase a writing curriculum, we wrote that in there, um, there's optional graduate credit course for, you know, of our staff, if they choose, family and community involvement, um, everything's right here, although, we have a select team, it'll be probably four teachers, all of our teachers, and it's content, uh, you know, across the continent, and so all of them will be in a fit, and, and so, we're just going to beautifully, most forward to where. And where's that?
And this was, like, on that, it's a brand, where, A D, um, school, not district, it was A school, and we received it, right, and so, it's, it's, it was, uh,
Where's that?
Is it a matching, or this?
It's black.
You're saying it's black?
Right. Just black, um, we're super excited, I have given this all done, uh, a lot of that here, to, um, to just jive down, work, work together, and, and, uh, I have so much inside to try to master, so we're gonna, to, to.
There's a grant for, right, a company, or is it federal, or?
It's, um, yeah, that's, yeah.
And the resident initiated item. All right, related. I don't have a list of them. Yeah, it's separate. Okay. So there's three that are related to me, so we'll pull those out. We got Jessica and. Tina Fraser. And Christie. I'm going to do, let's do Jessica and Christie because they're just. All those in favor? Do we have Tina Fraser, which is Josh and. Always in favor? And Josh and. You got all those. Always in favor? Do you want to add something? And then.
Can we ask what them are for?
Always in favor? That was because we're related to the person, we can't, we pull them out. It's related to the teachers that are being paid. So to be fair, the related parties are pulled out and we don't hold them.
Thank you, Stan.
Yeah, that's, that's to make everything square.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. I just didn't understand what was going on.
Go ahead.
So resident, I'm in N, resident Raina Foster asked to add this item to the agenda. She would like to hold her concern for the new leadership structure that we need to take at first through the next three years. As she hear a letter at Saks Media, Mark Spence, who qualified as also creating the board after that, and his foster listening to her folks, um, for that.
Just so against your rules, there's five minutes. And then we can't talk about specific people. If that's needed, if you, you would just need to save it. And create a full session, it would have to be next month, we have to publish that we're having this on the agenda today.
So you're saying I have to say like principal or?
Just try not to, we can't talk about any specific or move to any specific.
Personal.
Personnel matters or not to be talked about in that session.
Because about a specific person, like a complaint or an issue related to them, then it's closed session. If you're just saying, we're talking generally.
About the principal position.
Yeah, referring to a position.
Long enough referring to that person, even if they're many today, then it needs to be closed. But now it's a personnel.
So I have a question, why is, if she's already on the list, why is she only allowed to have five minutes when other people were allowed to have more than five that was on the agenda?
It's the law. It's the policy, it's the policy, we don't make the rules. That's the rule.
I mean, she's on the agenda though, right?
Correct.
And so she should be allowed to have more than five minutes, just like Ms. Heine had more than five minutes. She actually had thirteen when she was doing her presentation. And then it was nineteen with the questions, which, and I'm not saying that she doesn't get them.
Right.
I'm just saying that fair is fair. She's on the, she is on the agenda.
Right. I can see where that is a little confusing, but the difference with being that staff or anyone sitting at the table, we're not limited to a time. However, our policy states of public participation, when someone from the public, item on the agenda, the rule is that we limit them to five minutes speaking. So it's just a little different between when public participates and when board members or administrators have.
Well, that was the point of the public speaking or what I did. Was because I wasn't on the agenda, I could, I only had five minutes. So the whole point of it was to have, be put on the agenda.
We're going to go forward. Go ahead, Wendy.
No, it's fine to be rude.
Katie, I come before you tonight, not just as a parent, but as a concerned citizen and taxpayer of this district. The people in Birchtree that ignored, marginalized by the very district meant to serve all communities equally. After speaking with residents of this district and the superintendent, it's clear, these growing concerns are not isolated. Are the citizens and students of Birchtree viewed as second class citizens while it's born? Are? Is our community less important simply because we generate less tax revenue than Mountain View? We've heard the explanation that the decision to assign Birchtree an assistant principal is due to the declining test scores in the last two years by the superintendent. But what do test scores have to do with the necessity of proper leadership? If academic performance is the issue, we request access to certified data showing Birchtree falls, where Birchtree falls on the state average. And a clear explanation of how test scores justify reducing our administrative support. Let's be honest, the switch to a four day work, or four day week and recent leadership changes must be considered as contributing factors in if leadership wants to take credit for success, then must also take responsibility for setbacks. The superintendent admitted the issue is also communication, but communication is not optional, it's a fundamental part of her job. If she can't communicate effectively, she's not qualified to lead the district. Why is the assistant superintendent in transportation and not helping run the district? If the superintendent can't manage communication properly with her administration, why not rely on him instead of creating more unnecessary positions? Adding a head principal to do their jobs makes zero sense. When the current champ of communication are so broken, parents who call or email are often met with excuses and evasions. This is unacceptable. Communication should be truthful or straightforward answers. When communication fails to talk, it reverberates through every level of this district. The decision to assign an assistant principal to Birchtree without community input feels like a punishment rather than a solution. For years Birchtree has had a principal. Why now the change? Is this part of a long rumored consolidation plan? If this is indeed the direction you're taking us, let me be clear, Birchtree does not want to consolidate. We are also deeply frustrated by the selection of an assistant principal unfamiliar with our town, especially when qualified candidates from Birchtree apply. We appreciated our current Birchtree elementary principal, who truly knew and cared for our students and our community. Let me be clear, we don't want an assistant principal. We are tired of feeling like outsiders in our own district, tired of being ignored, misled, and silenced. Tired of retaliation against teachers and staff for speaking the truth. You have a choice. You can work with parents, teachers, and taxpayers, or continue down the path of exclusion and distrust. Families are leaving this district. We know seven that are going to home building. Seven. Seven families. If you're not asking why those families are leaving, you are not listening. So I'll close with this. How is the board and this administration going to fix this? Because fixing communication issues in test scores by removing our head principals and undermining our schools is not a real solution. It punishes the very committee you claim to support rather than the root of the problem, which is lack of communication with the people who elected some of you into these positions. Thank you.
Thank you for your consent.
Amen.
Just for transparency in regards to community involvement, residents Rochelle McKinney and Emma Kelly asked to add this item to the agenda. Ms. Kelly would like to address community involvement, including board involvement with the community. She asked to discuss ways the board might get involved more in the community. Ms. McKinney would like to discuss transparency with the school system. These items are similar in nature and are included in the same item. So Mrs. McKinney and Mrs. Kelly are here to share their concerns. Do they each get five minutes?
No.
No.
So, so, so my question is, since Bobby used some of his minutes for his speed at the beginning?
Well, I mean, just keep it close to five. I mean, we have discretion, we're not wanting to like limit, but we also would like to not be here until, not forever, at person. So with discretion, I'm going to let you know when it's five, if it's, if you can try to get it back.
Okay, because when I met with, when I tried, we all had five, we all asked.
Yeah, not separately, it's been separate issues. First, the community involvement, minus transparency issues, it was not going to be together.
We can only have three resident initiated items on the agenda, so I combined yours, so both of you could be here tonight and present.
And I'll take that into consideration to try to get you guys to both be able to say what you want to say.
Okay, that's fine. I'll be in mind for you guys.
Yeah, just a reminder too, I was, I was letting her know the same thing about personnel and that, you know, I don't see that being an issue, but just same reminders before.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today about transparency. I'm here because I deeply care about our schools, our staff, and most importantly, our children. But I'm here because many of our communities are deeply concerned about the direction this is taking and about the lack of real transparency and communication in the community. When a letter from a respected retired school teacher brought longstanding concern into light, the response was not openness, it was damage control. Staff were pulled into a meeting not to clarify or discuss, but to be told clearly and firmly in polished tones to sit down and shut up. No one outside the district talks, no one outside this school district should talk to anyone. Or no one inside the school district to talk to anyone outside the school district. That kind of response creates fear, not trust, and sends a dangerous message that silence is more important than accountability. Let me be clear, this isn't the first time. In two thousand seventeen, Pamela Adams endured mistreatment that made believe she contributed to her untimely pasy. When colleagues attempted to speak up, they were told to destroy evidence or face consequences. That's not the failure of leadership, it's a betrayal of your teachers and public's trust. And just so we are clear, we have reached out to her family, and we know disingestment to be true. This is not how a transparent administration operates, it is how an administration hides its guilt. Now we are told that the rumors of the school consolidation are unfounded. But if that is true, why issue verbal gag orders? Why muzzle your staff? Why hold them at meetings behind closed doors? Even your own superintendent has admitted consolidation has been the work for us for decades. We also know and have heard that there is a ten year plan to consolidate our elementaries. I believe we are on year three going into year four of that plan. We know that a few of our Birchtree teachers are being placed in Mountain View, and a few of our Mountain View teachers will be moved to Birchtree next year to help teachers become more on board with this plan. We are, we know the only reason that consolidation discussion is not being approached right now is due to lack of funding and due to the ten year plan. The public deserves the truth, not deflection. And so we are clear, we do not want our, our elementaries to be consolidated. We are all one of God's creations. Let me declare, no one sitting on this board is above the people you serve, and that includes the teachers you silence, the staff you pressure, and the parents you exclude. We are not here to be managed, we are here to be represented. I'm not here to tear anyone down. We're here because we expect better and we know our community deserves better. If you want to move forward, truly forward, start including parents in real conversations. We want a seat at the table for the big decision making discussions that affect both us and our children. In the culture of silence and fear, respect the voices of those who care enough to speak up, because respect goes both ways. You want our respect, start respecting us when we speak. Let me close with this. When, with, if we hear a retaliation against teachers who dare to speak out, we want you to know that the parents will be behind those teachers one hundred percent. And we will support those teachers and help them get what they deserve in some of your areas. Do not bully your staff, your students, or your parents. You will not get away with it. We are all acting together and you will be watching. We will not be going away and we will no longer stay silent. Thank you.
Okay, I'll start the taxes again. Um, I do appreciate your opportunity to, to speak to the board. My name is Emma Kelly and I advocate for elderly and abused children in locally and at the state level. I was asked to attend a community meeting a couple of months ago. The meetings have consisted of stakeholders in our community to all of our parents, out of concerns of how the school district has been managed in some areas and the decisions being made by the board. And some of these I found extremely disheartening and disturbing. I was already aware that some of the parents who chose to homeschool were taking their children to other districts. Although I didn't realize it was happening at such an alarming rate, or that there were so many issues coming up, the community has taken, I know we have taken great strides in Birchtree to bring our community back from what has happened to it for the past eighteen years. And, you know, I personally want my taxes to be in a responsible manner that's consistent with our values and goals for the children. And one of the things that I get disturbed about because I'm active with elections and things is, I could not, I have not been able to find one open meeting, meet and greet for board meetings. I think on Facebook, I'm sorry, not board meetings, but when someone is a candidate running for a board position, I did find one lady said, on Facebook, I'm running for the board, vote for me. And it doesn't tell me anything. We really don't even know why any of y'all want to be on the school board. You know, why does anybody want to be on the school board? After tonight, I'll call it in. I want to know what candidates, I want to know what you all know about education. What are your values, beliefs, and vision for our kids? You know, like I said, I'm an avid voter, I'm active in the community. When I put my vote down, I want to know who I'm voting for. So that's something I wish we could address. Although I didn't realize it was happening at such an alarming rate or that there were so many issues coming up. The community has taken, I know we have taken great strides in Birch Tree to bring our community back from what has happened to it for the past eighteen years. And, you know, I personally want my taxes to be in a responsible manner that's consistent with our values and goals for the children. And one of the things that I get disturbed about because I'm active with elections and things is I could not, I have not been able to find one open meeting, meet and greet for board meetings. I think on Facebook, I'm sorry, not board meetings, but when someone is a candidate running for a board position, I did find one lady said on Facebook, "I'm running for the board, vote for me." And it doesn't tell me anything. We really don't even know why any of y'all want to be on the school board. You know? Why does anybody want to be on the school board? After tonight, I'll call it in. I want to know what candidates, I want to know what y'all know about education. What are your values, beliefs, and visions for our kids? You know, like I said, I'm an advocate voter, I'm active in the community. When I put my vote down, I want to know who I'm voting for. So that's something I wish we could address. These are, these are five concerns that I got from the meetings that were held. And like I said, I'll try to be quick and I probably need to email this, but... A life of support for the Birch Tree Elementary School, for example. When the storm blew the fence down between the road and the playground, it took over a month and it took a parent calling and saying, "Hey," or saying, "We've got a fence down here." And if anyone's gone through administrative training, you know, the very first and foremost thing is your building, your facility has to be the same before you do anything else, period. And I'm so disappointed in that. But that's another example of why people are feeling, you know, like we're second-class citizens. Another problem's come up with the new organization plan. We had a great, or have a great principal after many years, and we're losing her, our assistant principal. But I'm just gonna quickly, we don't need to email the rest. Second, it's fair treatment and fair pay for the teachers. There's incidents that have happened with the teachers, and I may need to come back for a close meeting next month. The third issue has to do with when these things come up, pedophiles, X-rated movies being shown or with scenes in them that are being shown. You know, parents start worrying, like, you know, what's happening at our school? Are we having attacks in the bathrooms? Are we behind the stage or do we have a mattress? I've seen quite a few things happen. The fourth thing is...
Let's see how people got with the comment.
Okay. I just have a couple more things.
Just wrap it up here.
Okay. The fourth concern is representation of Birch Tree. The fifth is nepotism in the district. And these are the three things that I've gotten out of the meetings I've attended. Parents would like to have open meetings, our community would like to have open meetings, just like tonight. Their states are like the last board meeting, I think Shelley was talking about some people at the state. I would have liked to have heard more, since, you know, I know that she's on top of those things. So they're asking for open meetings, at least twice a year, to where parents can ask questions and information can be given to them. And that we can ask questions. That's hard for me to sit here and I'm really just Miss Kindness presentation. I would have liked to hear more about it, you know? But it's constrained here with board meetings. Anytime there's a major change, the second thing, they like stakeholders should be able to have input. For example, like those friends when they were discussing the four-day school schedule, they had an open meeting, they listened to the community, and they felt as if they were... And I'm not saying it's good or bad, I'm just saying there was a major change, everybody got input. Also, they would like community of parents that can be to go between between the school, that would represent all the families. And I have all hopes that these issues can be addressed and there's resolution to it. I never go advocate for the elderly or for children, whether it's at the state level or the nursing home or whatever, without knowing there can be some real good outcomes. Sometimes it feels very rocky. But, you know, I just want to say, I've heard nothing but... And you've been a voice for us, too.
Thank you all, you guys, who got the courage to voice your concerns, it helps everyone. As a community working together, we truly feel that. I'm gonna step out of bounds probably, maybe try to say some of them, not out of bounds, but in the voice of the group, hopefully. Our primary reason we ran, I can say this confidently, is that number one, kids, how can we improve our community? How can we improve our school district? How can we do it with the best use of the money that the taxpayers give us? And it's our duty, that's our duty. But so, that's that. Secondly, I mean, some pretty alarming accusations were brought up. And a couple of them, emails are listed on the website. If you have specific things that came up, like, they should be investigated, we agree, but we need to handle the specific things. We can't go on, oh, it's rumored, or we've heard that. You know, we need the specific examples. We would be interested to know the specific examples, so we could chat. And I think that is not out of bounds, because anybody said, "Thank you." So, we truly are a team, it's not a random us. And we have a vision of two communities, Mountain View versus one library, one school, we're all moving in the same direction, so. All right, thank you guys very much for that. Okay, so, my item, P. P, thank you, Eric. Anyone? It is, thank you, somebody needs to, the lease or the test.
Okay, I am P is the ground lease agreement. The District for the Right to Enter Agreement with the City of Mountain View to lease the test court. Off that lease will expire on December thirty-first, twenty forty-five, twenty just now. You all have a copy of the lease agreement in front of you. I just recommend that you approve that lease with the City of Mountain View for the test court. And you need to drive by the test court.
I've got the side-by-side before and after. We'll set that up here for you. It's remarkable. We've gone from not being able to host events, that's the core business, it's a core shape, the practice is so deep. That now we have, we have hope of bringing other people in. Obviously, that competition with all of the students, level committees. This is something that, it's garnering a lot of interest already. It actually got blended, we had a private donation, they call it blended lines, so there actually is a pickleball court on the back end of one court, both ends. So there's two pickleball courts. They donated the nets for those. So the district was out no money for that, but it's, it's, it's big. It's very nice, drive by and check it out. Right now, it is still locked up, that's per their suggestion to let all the names through properly. But after a few hot days, I'm ready, and then it locks off. And it's back to community, which is always as we're concerned.
Awesome, so we need to, very much in favor of these. Josh seconded, all those in favor? All right. Now to other business, and there's nine. Again, I don't guess we need to have.
Unless she's got something wrong.
I'm dead.
Come on, jump up and do some more.
Mr. Davis, let's start. She's been entertaining us all evening night.
Um, the community was...
We're staying here all day.
We had a busy weekend for a week, but we're editing.
Got all my shit in this.
A couple of things that do stand out with our building, and we met Amy Green. We have to back, we're not at our BIF committee. But some of them are here tonight, Rochelle's on that BIF committee, that McCann's are on that BIF committee, Sally Boss is on that BIF committee, she was canceled. And, you know, we just talked about five different areas that we're developing. We brought data and just chose a few things that we can focus on. And our leadership team will be taking that information and looking at new strategies for our BIF. Our BIF guide, anything we do in our building. And so, that was, that's good. And, uh... No, we're only there for that, that's all I'm gonna add. I have everything to add. I don't want to let you break a question. Just want to let you know that we, it's finishing up the year with Bang. We finalized our last PIP, to set up some sort of parents. Today, we have evaluated eighty-six students this year for evaluation, which is a lot. And, you know, I'm in Birch Tree, and I just want to say, thank you so much for twenty-three years. And Birch Tree will always be my home.
Awesome, thank you very much, you're appreciated, too.
I think my main board report was last Friday night, the other month. Graduation, I felt like amazing. And I know I got a lot of credit for that. And it's not, it's not me, I mean, I do a lot of stuff with the kids and just making sure things are put in order. But I, there's four or five ladies at school that worked tirelessly with me for about three weeks before graduation. I've been going through everything to make sure that everything's, all the Ts are crossed, your Is are dotted. You know, I'm just a senior or a study at that point. There's so much that goes into that. You know, the culminating experience of elementary, middle school, high school altogether back there at graduation. It was a great group of kids. You know, before that, went on a senior trip, since our last board meeting. Great group of kids that went there. I don't think I got onto a single kid, and that's a testament to parents as well. You know, it was respectful of us, we saw the gas station, we went in and ate. Groups hanging out together, didn't normally hang out. It was just fun to see and to mess around and karaoke with them and step on the pool. Just all kinds of neat stuff. I appreciate the support you guys have at the high school for building our ag and our business, and facts, and FCCLA, and Ed Rising program. I think businesses in both communities can test to the importance of the need of those. You know, it's not, it's not trying to push every student college, it's trying to push every student into what's going to be successful for them in life and what they're interested in. We brought a lot of things into the school as a group for those kids. And I think that will help the community in the long run. Right now, just preparing summer school, looking at first final grades and different things. And so, we got a fun day at school today, basketball, volleyball, pickleball. I did not play all of those. I did play cornhole with some kids, that's more my speed now. And the kids were great today, I don't think they're down on senior kids today. Just helping out with period.
Helping her out.
The kids loved it, the kids loved it. So, just working on a new career, you know? I, I think we have a great group of kids.
Good staff, I appreciate everything.
I don't have anything else.
A lot of the stuff that I probably, really probably pushing in the next month, the homeschool bill that just is quickly getting signed for the wrap-up decision, haven't been assigned yet, and also, mission lawyers not giving us any guidance yet. If we're gonna do, we all talked about, we want to take it for advantage, so that there can be a way to get full on, to make sure that we drop the rest of it someplace. Hopefully, that there are some requirements that they'll have with us, conditions and stuff like that. But we just have to wait. Possible change from our six to eight, however they use them, because we still have to kind of get a house and shuffle. You know, they're not gonna play up, not gonna play down. So, that'd be pretty, to see, you know, how we're dealing with working place and ownership and ones that we don't have enough kids to play. There's a lot, lot of stuff. It's probably fully met up, we have to wait, we have to wait for the assignment, for sure. Thank you very much.
We're wrapping up. Everything for the school year, we've got, except what did, we all have a lot of stuff to do next year. We have a lot of plans for the summer, just, we have to keep our whole building, also, lots of potential campuses that are gonna be upgraded, just trying to sustain what we have and better, and looking at opportunities to maybe add over there, whatever, different things around the campuses. The school year's about to end, but maybe some other world things about to be discussed. Same age, for the summer, that's when we come out then, we're gonna do things. We've got that in all the buildings, so. Nothing, I mean, nothing monumental, just trying to, yeah, do the normal stuff and then just, we had some, some things that we're going to kind of put a foot in on